I'd like to call the Planning Commission to order. Most members are present, so we have established quorum. Unfortunately, Harry is not here as of yet. We do have some items on the agenda today, and one of them being a public hearing. So there is a clipboard up on the center table. If you're interested in speaking during this public hearing, we would need your name down there. And if you do plan on speaking at all during the meeting today, you need to administer an oath. So, members that are, the oath is if you swear affirm to tell the truth, or do you swear affirm to tell the truth to this commission, just say, "I do." "I do," thank you. Again, if you come, we have microphones up the table and also at the podium. Just state your name and a street address for the city of Athens that you're in. And that's all. Public hearing, the first item is the Tony Ferrian Plan Unit Development, Milliron and Union. This has been discussed at the past few planning commissions, and I believe we had, you know, a group that voted on this at one point with the changes in the plans. There was a considerable change from the last one. The same units, but really just a different orientation would be the best way to describe it. You know, I don't think there was a vote now that I'm thinking. Sean, do you have that record?
No, I don't think so.
I didn't think so. Apologize for it.
No, I don't think there was.
No.
We will need a vote.
We will. Eventually, my memory will come back to me. It's apparently with Harry Hawaii.
So, this is for 84 beds, two buildings. 185 percent is green space, I believe, if my memory is correct.
Right. So it would be PUD.
Yes, that's why I said it would be PUDs, yes.
Had it been granted, I wonder.
I do see some commentary. David, March 2nd, Paul Loeb.
Where's that one? Oh, there it is.
Is he getting it?
No, I didn't. Oh, there it is.
Under there, maybe.
Paul, did you check into the variance issue on the flood?
I did. It's not going to be applicable anyways.
It's not applicable in this case?
No. I did the calculations on it. He's under the amount that's allowed anyways, so he's okay.
So the variance is no longer required?
No.
Just the variance on PUD being under 2 acres.
Correct.
I wanted to just have a discussion. I thought this should have been the last meeting. This seems to me it may be the third project that we approve that has more parking than what is required.
Parking's a minimum. In the, is that, like, I mean, I guess in how it is written in code is that this is the minimum amount of parking required. It's not a maximum, correct?
Yes. Just as a issue of protocol, I believe, if we're in a public hearing, the public hearing is for citizens to speak for against a project. Once that part is done, we have to close the public hearing, and then we can go into planning commission general discussion, just as a formal structure here.
I guess I was talking out of turn in one sense, but to give some background in case somebody, anybody needs it.
Right.
Okay, but it is a public hearing, so.
Yes, they are providing more parking than they're required to, to answer that question.
Okay. All right, well, based on your recommendation, Paul, I appreciate that. We will hold off any further discussion, commission members, and now make the hearing open to the general public who would like to speak. Anyone that would, either podium or in the stadium?
I'll tell him his name, actually, on the side of the chair first. I don't really have anything to say, do I?
That's up to you. This commission will not speak for anyone.
Can I let that take that down?
No comment, that's all.
I guess, Tony Ferrian, you know, I just kind of reviewed through the stuff that John gave me, and I don't see any problem in doing any of these recommendations. Obviously, some of them are needed. My assumption was, when it comes to planning commission, before you kind of spend all this money on all these details, which I do plan on hiring an engineer to engineer all these details, you know, that first, once it's approved by the planning commission, then I'll go back and then spend the money on the engineer and do those kind of things. Because I'm fully aware of all these things that need to be done. I guess there was a couple I wasn't, but as far as, you know, the elevations and, you know, all those kind of other little details on there, I need all that for myself, too. You know, I'm not just going to go in there and kind of place things where I think they need to be. This is all, this is all to be done by an engineer, which with detail, with great detail, I might add, for the project to work the way it's supposed to work, to benefit not only me, but the community and the city services. So, that being said, I guess that's really all I have to add to this public hearing at this point.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. What else would like to speak?
Me standing behind a podium.
More relaxed this way, huh?
Yeah.
My name's Alan Swank. I live at Forty Townsend Place over on the east side. I'm here neither for nor against this project, or for or against Mr. Ferrian's proposal. In fact, one of my best friends is a person who bought a fine house from Mr. Ferrian. I've been through several of his properties, looking at property here to buy in the city of Athens. When I first saw this announcement of this meeting in the messenger, which I get about 2:00 o'clock also, well, that's not on the tape, is it? I was a little perplexed. I saw East Union Street, and I couldn't remember where that was, and I saw Milliron, and all I could remember was the old Tools Tavern. So I drove down to see the location of this property, and several things came to mind. First of all, the whole question of quality of life and population density. Here we are on March the 2nd, and we're already talking about the fests that will be coming up this fall, or excuse me, the spring. And not to add fuel to the fire, but it seems to me if we put 84 more people in already highly populated area, we are actually adding potentially more fuel to the fire. So I took my little Smart Car down, which is a very easy car to get around, and drove in and out of Milliron and in and out of Union. And I began to wonder, first of all, how are we going to get construction equipment in there without providing a safety hazard to the current residents? And if you've driven up and down that road, know the sidewalks are in absolutely deplorable condition. Anytime we get big rains in the spring, sometimes the water can be as deep as six to eight inches. The turning radius on those curves, I wouldn't want to be driving the equipment. Another thing that concerned me, talking about 84 parking spots, can that area accommodate the flow in and out of potentially 84 more cars? Sure, we need high-quality housing here in Athens, there's no doubt about it. We need affordable, high-quality housing here in Athens. But I'm just wondering if this is the best place to do it. If it is being the best place, the question's then would move into taxation. How much more money will specifically the Athens City School District be able to collect in property taxes on that improved property? In other words, what's the value of the finished product going to be? I would assume it'd be in the millions, which potentially could be significant tax revenue. And for those of you discussing Senate Bill 5 earlier, Lord knows, we're going to need that kind of revenue. Another question I had, as it pertains to taxes, is the income generated from that property going to benefit the Athens City School System in terms of their 1% earned income tax? It scares me when I see these major projects going up around town that in many cases are not subject to that tax. Consequently, it puts an unfair burden, in my opinion, to, on the taxpayers. Yes, this is a great project, I'm sure it is. I question the location, I question the positive economic impact, and certainly question the safety of the residents in that area, although after we introduce 84 more people, and notice, I'm not saying students, because he very well could be running to non-students. But we put 84 more people and 84 more cars in what is really turning into a highly compacted, very dense location in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the general public? At that rate, I will close the public hearing and leave it now to discussion by the planning commission. Move on to the case, Tony Ferrian, Milliron, Union, Plan Unit Development. Anyone have a first comment?
Well, in terms of what's going on with the public hearing, again, this is our three zone, I believe. I think, if we go back to comprehensive plan, which I think we've been slowly diverting from, there was talk about increasing density. I think we are, over time, questioning the rationale for that. And when we talk about increasing density, which was in the comprehensive plan, actually talking about either residential high density or residential four, the limitation I always saw was the parking requirements. What I, what I see in this type of location is that it is close to campus. I don't expect a lot of traffic in terms of the vehicles going in and out. The assumption is that it's going to be student housing. I'm cognizant of the fact that it is high density. In terms of construction materials, Mr. Ferrian's had two buildings built up there already.
Yes, sir.
I assume you haven't run over anybody?
No, and we've actually worked with the area of residents in that area any time that we've, you know.
You might want to come to the mic, so somebody knows what's going on here.
Anytime we've worked, we have built two other buildings in that area, and with great consideration of traffic flow and the amount of people going up and down that street, and we're very conscious about the movement of our vehicles up and down those streets. Safety is a priority, you know, for us also. Have we done it perfectly? Probably not. But every single time that we notice that there's dirt on the streets from the traffic flow from the trucks, we immediately get out and sweep down the streets. We always have gentleman and safety. If we do have to park a loading or unloading truck out on the city streets, we've always had a guy on each end of that with flags to make sure that, you know, that there's no, that the traffic does flow and that they visually see us. We're very aware and very conscious of those issues as pertaining to when we're building. In relation to what you had talked about in the comprehensive plan, one of the things that we are speculating as a private group is the increased enrollment at Ohio University and not the, and also the possibility of some dorms being reconstructed, and the need for more student housing possibly. And being that I've also read the comprehensive plan concerning the Mill Street Zone and how that was kind of the way I thought, or I interpreted, they were kind of looking at this area for the higher density. Me, in what I do, which is serve, you know, rentals and rental management properties, you know, I'm going to continue to try to serve that need. If there's a supply, there's a demand, and I'm going to try to do that. And whether I do that in that area, or if I see a more of a demand in another area, which may be on the east side or west side, I'm going to fill that demand, and I'm going to move into those areas. But what this does is tries to keep guys like me out of those areas and put them in the areas that was designed by the comprehensive plan for the high-density area. And that's what we're trying to accomplish in that area, moving forward with the comprehensive plan, with adequate parking, with the need for more housing in this area. I also agree with the walkability in that area. We've actually taken, talked to our tenants in those areas on how much do you walk, how much do you not walk? And that gets into a whole nother can of worms when it comes to the parking, because I'm definitely not for the one-to-one, but that's the law, and I have to abide by that. Most of my students walk. Most of the people, I should say my students, most of the people who rent from me walk. And then I time and time again hear that from them. So it's kind of like I'm wasting a spot that I could be putting green in, but once again, I'm getting off on a different tangent, I guess, and I probably shouldn't do that. But most of those kids stay put, and they walk uptown, they walk to classes. So as far as the traffic flow, I would contend that most of the traffic flow on Stewart Street is actually university-generated, because I stay down on that road a lot, and come 4:00, when the university lets out, there's an increased flow of traffic through there. But pretty much during the day, it's not that, you know, it's not overwhelming. I do see a huge amount of students walking in those areas, but I don't see a lot of people driving in those areas.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt on this. I realize, just trying to address some of the concerns of Mr. Swank.
Oh, I understand. No, that's fine. I'm listening to him. How's that?
Well, yeah, and I assume you're not a government agency, that you're exempt from taxes, real estate taxes, right?
No, I'm not exempt from anything. I repay.
Okay. And we won't know the amount until it's all done and assessed from the county, I assume?
That's correct.
Okay. Again, you talk about you don't like the one-to-one, but you do have, and I jumped over what Paul was talking about, the nine extra spots or so.
Yeah.
So if you really don't agree with the one-to-one parking ratio between beds and parking spaces, why do you have the excess? Why do you?
Well, that's a good question. To be frankly honest, if I were to buy other things in that area, I would be able to use that parking because of the 40% law. It's kind of like, I don't come and tell you how to mayor, you know what I mean? So it's like, I understand that you have a responsibility to take a look at that, but my decision-making is a private entity, and I'm going within the constraints of what I can do, because I've already put this under a Title 41 also. And I don't think that I'm extending my bounds in any way, shape, or form. As a matter of fact, I think that if I were.
Let me interrupt for a second. I don't think the mayor is suggesting you get rid of him. He's just curious why you would be.
For future growth.
Okay, and you answer that question. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, I guess I was kind of going around about where you're.
If I may, I'm curious as to whether or not, and I should have brought this up earlier, Tony, and I agree to that, but like I said, I think this is the third project. We had one on Mill Street, we had the integrated services. Office expansion, and now yours, that have greater parking spaces than what is required. Is that a commercial endeavor? Are those parking spaces going to be leased? Is there?
We don't lease our parking places. We provide them for our tenants for free.
Okay, and I would like to point out, if I may.
Please.
You know, the example of is Harold Square, where we've had criticism on members, residents on Blick, saying we did not, the construction there did not put enough parking in for the guests. In other words, they're looking at the ability to actually have extra people there when time requires it. I also had conversations with the planner, saying, you know, we've never really put in an upper limit to parking. We have a minimum requirement, but not a maximum. And we've discussed that, saying whether we want to change that mix someday.
But I can see both with the Graham Drive project that was indeed in anticipation of a separate, I guess I'd almost like to see them whole, even if it's in design, so that we know. Do they have to be built with that, or can it, you know, that space, that's where I'm going to build the additional seven?
Well, it actually kind of fits into the whole concept of the site plan, and the mayor brought up a great point. You know, you get the parents' weekends and things like that, and I know that happens on a lot of the other properties that I own. The parents have the freedom of extra parking that alleviates some of the parking that somebody might slide down over here and put a parking spot on Morse Avenue, or wherever over a weekend, or if kids are down for whatever reason, SIBS Weekend or some of the other things that go on, there's an extra spot. Since we don't charge, there's an extra spot for that person to be able to park. Maybe a parent comes down for parents' weekend, and want to put their car on our lot because their kid lives in our building, or whatever the case may be, that takes that car off of somebody else's street and puts them, you know, right there.
How many people currently live, like, in the houses that are there right now? You have any, just an estimate?
Four, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12. There's 12 students in the four houses that we're going to tear down.
So there'd be an additional?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two people there?
Yeah.
In terms of the taxes, that's not really our purview here on the commission, I understand that. This, the additional parking, the seven additional spaces, really don't trouble me as much as then, I guess the question would be, is the project itself too big? You know, if you're just talking about seven more spaces, you know, that easily, you know, the logic of, you know, visitors, the logic of, you know, if you have some additional spaces to lend out to somebody down the street, that, you know, I can see that, you know, just in my mind, that's not a lot. I understand what you're saying about Graham, and, you know, I have probably a little more concern about that than I do about this. But, you know, I guess then, really what you would be asking, well, is this entire project, you know, bigger than what should be there? But on the other hand, you know, the comprehensive plan was very vague on the idea of density, and that, and I think that it has, you know, as the previous speaker said, I think that it has come back to bite the city. But at the same time, that's where the comprehensive plan has directed, you know, developers, and that, this is where, you know, they were encouraged to do their building. So, you know, I don't know if this is something that we want to revisit. I don't know if it's something then that, you know, I've never been one who's believed that we doggedly follow the comprehensive plan, because I think there's a lot of, to me, a lot of contradictions in the plan itself. So, but certainly in terms of the need, the housing is, we, you know, the community is going to need more student housing. We're assuming that it's student housing, but, you know, the university does have a lot of plans coming up in the next three to four years, actually 10 years, that where they're going to be stretching this new building project that they're going to be doing. And in terms of the location, it's a very good location for students. I do tend to agree, you know, I do a lot of business, so I'm in my car quite a bit, you know, driving around town, and I do agree that during the hours that are not rush hour from the university, that the streets there really are not that congested in terms of automobiles. So I don't see that as a problem, although, you know, I do share the concerns about when you, when you do construction, that, you know, that was a bit of a hassle for people to get in and out of, and, you know, I do share that part. Were you planning on, if everything was turned into a green light, were you planning on doing this during the, starting the summer?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Where would you plan on, on construction concluding?
The reason I brought this to a PUD was so I could kind of do it in phases. I would do the one this summer, which would probably lead me into, I'm speculating, November, December. So they kind of back off and then go back at it again the following June with the second building.
So you're planning basically to try to work, in theory, work around the more congested or the more trafficked areas, times of the year?
Well, I guess the summers aren't, yeah, I guess you could, you could say that. I don't like to build in the winter. How's that? But if I could get the first building done by November or December, which is, which is a very reasonable plan for me based on the other two buildings that I have built, then I don't have to do anything until, from December to June again. And then we'll revisit, we'll pick up the next building and start the process of it, which may take me a little bit longer, I would say. I'll be reaching into January on the second building, because it's bigger.
And again, this isn't our area of authority or whatever, but would you be planning in terms of traffic flow, again, to answer the gentleman's question, of maybe ceasing construction around the first week of September when people are moving back in, or?
You know, I don't, I've never given that much thought, but I don't have a problem with that. You know, I could actually make myself more, now that you're bringing this to our attention, I can definitely be more conscious about that. But, I mean, if you look at the overall scheme of the six months, basically, that will be attacking each building, you know, three of it's over the summer, June, July, and August. Then obviously, school, September, October, November, and then December, so four of the, or, would that be what, seven months? Yeah. Basically, three of those months would be where there'd be more traffic flow, and the other three and a half to four would be when there would be basically a very, so I guess we are kind of easing the congestion part of, you know, we're not going in there and doing it in the middle of the school year, during the whole school year, to where it would be a little bit more chaotic.
If I may, we have regulations in place that if somebody needs to close a street or close a lane or what have you, they have to submit in advance with all the proper traffic control measures. So as far as protecting the public roadways and the access that, and on sidewalks, we, you know, we'd be working with the developer.
Yeah, and we did that on the Sixth Mile when we put the storm sewer in. We worked directly with the city and the guys down there at City Building, and we worked directly with them through that, and we did maintain a lane for them, for the, for the public to go through while that was going on.
I was going to say, the heavy construction part of the project would probably be done by Labor Day anyways.
I hope so, yeah. That's true.
With the heavy equipment, the road closures, all of that, after that, it's the smaller guys that are in there.
I think also, though, in regards to this project, you know, we talk about density, and, you know, I think it is something that we need to probably talk more about in the future, that at least the parking spaces are here, as opposed to where you go on Palmer, parts of Stewart and Mill, where basically they've put a second and a third story on top of, you know, formerly one-story structures, and really didn't address the parking an awful lot, you know, where they're just kind of cramming people in. This does have a more cohesive plan to it, you know, something that's built into the project rather than add-on. And, you know, I think that, you know, the other type of density is a big concern to me. This project, you know, is something I looked at, and I know Paula was concerned about the number of people initially, maybe still is, and, you know, I am to some degree, but at the same time, I think that where it's located is a proper location in terms of who's likely going to be living there. You know, I think that you're basically going to be building up more pedestrian parking or pedestrian activity than you are automotive activity. So, you know, I think in that sense, it's much more cohesive than what we've seen in other parts of, you know, the Mill District there.
And I will say that I understand the whole concept of building within certain student neighborhood areas as opposed to what Tony was intimating, well, it could be going to the east end or the west end, or, you know, further out. The kids do want to be anywhere with something that says Mill or Palmer, or, I don't know.
Walking distance.
But yes, I mean, the fest aside, and we are planning for the fest, but, you know, adding additional, as long as you're not sponsoring a Milliron Fest or something, Tony.
I don't want it in my backyard anymore than anybody else wants it.
And to all likelihood, those 64 additional people, or 72 additional people are probably there at the fest anyway, so, you know, it's just.
So we're a walk home.
Okay, so this is a really, we're approving a preliminary plan, is that what I'm seeing here, or this is a final, this is a preliminary?
This would be a preliminary, and I did include a copy of the PUD, Title 2109, for each of you.
Yeah, I'd like to go through some of those items, if you would, Paul.
It's your decision as to whether you want to approve at this point or not. We just completed the public hearing, which falls under from 210913 and 210914, so we'd be at 210916, as the stage we'd be at, which is on page four, I believe. Within 60 days after the application is filed, the commissioner shall review the preliminary plan. I would treat this as Mr. Ferrian providing preliminary plan. The city, we did do a staff review of it, which has been provided to you as well as to Mr. Ferrian. The expectation would always be that preliminary plan, as it states here, "If the proposed development advances the general welfare of the community and neighborhood and the benefits, combination of various land uses and the interrelationship with the land uses in the surrounding area, justify the deviation from standard zones regulations. The commission's approval in principle of the preliminary plan shall be necessary before an applicant may submit a final plan." So this is, and it says, "An approval in principle shall not be construed to endorse a precise location of..." a precise location of uses." So what I would treat this, yes, this is a preliminary approval. If that's given to Mr. Farian, then at that point, he would take the, the staff review information and add that into his plan, and then he would return with final plans.
It is architect, not an engineer.
Does the PUD, does he go to city council, which is the preliminary, before he does all that?
No, no. The final plan will be approved by the planning commission and then forwarded to city council.
And that, and that's all based on a, on the PUD? Because I have submitted this as a Title 41, which would mean basically I wouldn't have to go through any of this process.
Instead, you come through this.
Right, I understand that part. But based on what I think I know, but I haven't read the Title 41, giving you engineered drawings and things like that wouldn't be required until after I've been given permission. I mean, because if I indeed go to that, I could, I could still get turned down by council and then have to go back to the drawing board. I don't think that's going to happen as far as engineering reports go because I'm going to engineer it the same way, but I will have to kind of do a few things because of the way the land lays. At this point, I mean, it won't affect the title, it won't affect the track at all, what I'm doing. But I will have to take into consideration easements, which are all considerable more cost, which means that three lots would have to be separated off of this side to the five, which means, you know, some additional engineering will have to be done, which are additional costs. I, I guess I really wasn't aware that I needed to bring these to the table at this point. I, I kind of thought if I got through, and this was my understanding, if I got through the planning before I go to city council, that I'd be required to have these things. Because under Title 41, I'm not required to have these things, which would save me a considerable amount of money in the basis that if I'm turned down from city council, that wasted a bunch of money, to an extent. I'm going to use most of that anyways, and I'm going to have to go back to the drawing board again.
Title 41, he would be able to submit what he has right now, get the approval through here, and then all of the notes and comments and engineer drawings and such, he would then, after the Title 41 approval, come back in and resubmit for his actual permit, zoning permits. And at that time, we would review and make sure all of that other stuff was done according to what was decided here.
Title 41 would look at individual buildings.
And Title 41, he would have to, yes. And it would be two separate applications, which he has submitted for as well.
I just thought it'd be better for me to bring you this whole thing as one, for the fact of the matter that as a project, it's better as a whole than splitting it up.
Yeah. But, so the only thing you're going to need to do though, Tony, is you're going to have to get the engineered drawings and all your drawings done, which you're going to need either way as far as the, your utilities and engineer drawings. Either way you go, you're going to need those. So you're going to have to have all that. And then you'll come back here for a title, or for the PUD final plan review, and then take it to city council for your PUD hearings. So either way, you're going to need to do it.
I can't imagine it's too often that city council votes down a PUD recommendation by, I'm sure it's been done, but I can't.
I don't know if it's been done or not, actually. I don't, I don't see the evidence of it specifically, but.
It's always a risk. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I had plays on here with less parking and more green space and fear, for fear of getting turned down because I was trying to comply with the 40 percent. I believe you weren't here when I had these original plans brought in. And for fear of being turned down because of lack of parking, I backed off. I want, I tried, I was going to try to do the right thing and bring in the 40 percent. But the fact of the matter is, I had to go in front of council. And I know how they are about the one-to-one parking. And that's a whole different argument. I've done two months of studies showing where parking is really the problem. It's not really the solution, it's actually the problem. That's another theory or meeting or whatever you guys want to talk about, but it's crazy.
Well, if you did that, I mean, I think did the items that city council is looking for. Again, I don't think there'd be issue if the planning commission were to make a recommendation to the city council to approve the project. One question, if we can, take a look at this staff report sheet on the PUD supplemental. The setback on Mill Island is less than required.
Are you looking at the reviews of staff?
Yeah. By John, this is John.
Yeah, I just scaled it off because there were no dimensions on the actual setback. By scaling it off, it came out to 22 foot or 25 is required. But again, on a PUD, that's acceptable.
Okay. So you're, you're just looking at it more as a?
As just general guidelines, comments, yes.
Okay. But one of the other questions I did have was 85 bedrooms, right? But what is the number?
Eighty-four, sir.
Or eighty-four, what is the number of dwelling units? Is that, are, those aren't?
There's actually 36 units towed.
Okay.
The 30-bed facility, the smaller building is 12 units. The larger unit is 24 units, the larger building.
And in terms of the front setback, you said, is that in line with the other, was on Mill Street?
On that side of the street, there wouldn't be anything.
Oh, it's all.
It's all.
Okay. So that needs requires a variance from 23, 10?
Not on a PUD, setback.
Do we have it cited as a variance though, when we do a P, planning and development?
No, setback, front setback, side yard setback, limitations on PUDs, as long as it's presented in the plan, footprint, if that's what you're identifying, it's not a variance request.
Okay. We don't have that in sign?
I believe we.
Are you sure that, I mean, would that be?
I thought we let that up.
210908, special PUD lot requirements, A, lot was a setback. It's great to accommodate a variety of structural patterns, cluster designs, and housing types. Upon recommendation by the planning commission, approval of city council by majority, three-fourth vote, the lot recommendations for a PUD approved by the commission may vary. So the only, if the planning commission says it's acceptable to have those setbacks changed, then the only way city council can go against that would be a three-fourth vote, which is for anything else in the PUD. Anything the planning commission recommends, city council needs three-fourth vote to change that.
Okay.
And if you look at the site plan, he actually would be in performance with the center of the building, but he's got those little bump outs on the end that come out a couple feet. So that's where it was, that was that part that was not in compliance.
I, I guess the question I was asking is whether they're required to be cited in the recommendations to city council so they know what, what's in variation. I mean, we accept.
Probably should, yeah.
Because we will, we will actually somewhere in the recommendations cite that the variance is required for the two acres.
Yeah, I mean, that's why John did this, I think. Not to speak for him, but let's just point out the variations from standards.
It's not that it's not allowed, it's just, I just want recognition of where it is in variation to the code.
So back to 210916, approval in principle of preliminary plan that you read, Paul. Thank you. Combination and interrelationship with the land uses surrounding the area, justify the deviation from standard zones regulations. So is that what we're, example, what, the standard zones deviation or the lot, the fact that the lot's less than the two acres?
Right.
Well, the PUD requirement specifically says that PUDs are only for greater than two acres.
Okay.
And so that's a different standard. And that's because it's subdivision regulations, city council has to award a variance. The PUD as a whole, I look at a PUD as being a big variance. That's the easiest way I can think of it. It's a variance from subdivision regulations. It has to be compliant with zoning. It states that in 210908D. All other standards of the residential districts located in R1, R2, and R3 must be complied with. But it does allow for variations from setback. I don't know how I would interpret that, Paula, to be honest with you.
And again, the, the concept I have of a PUD is that it really gives us flexibility to, to fit the area and it's a planned, as a whole, unit development. And that's what we're looking at here.
I was satisfied that the, I mean, not scaling the setback, so I was satisfied with them and that it sort of gives a more of a residential presence along the street edges and then keeps the parking to the rear. So I mean, if there were parking in the front, I think there'd be more of an issue, even though, again, that would be permitted by the PUD, correct? Doesn't seem to be any regulation on which where parking to be and that's a setback issue.
We, we talked about that, but it's, he didn't, he ended up taking it all out, so there isn't any anyway.
Right. Okay.
Okay, and it's three and a half stories, 45 or three and a half stories? I remember that's whichever is taller of the two.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm just going down through the recommendations from here at the staff. Trees, eight, 28 required, 32 calculated shown, flood bill, and it says okay. I think I saw a recommendation of the police for lighting.
Yeah, I made a recommendation that he moved us, and Tony Solly was fine with that. The dumpster location on the small building is kind of in front of it. I asked that he put it back along the front edge or behind the front edge of the building. And he indicated he would do so. And then, as we discussed at the last meeting, adding another dumpster location for the other building.
Okay. And then I see the Public Works critique as well. They have very specific ones, I see. Concrete driveway aprons, manhole covers, something about a wrong location, a war line, six and four line, but it's just, these are just corrections that need to be looked at.
They would all be things that'd be done on his engineer drawings.
Yeah, on the final.
Yeah, that they would look at in detail.
Which is good. That's why we do this, so we know what's going on. And Tony knows what's going on, too. You talked, Tony, you talked about having extra parking, allowing, you know, residents and friends to do that. Do you, and I know you have some, you don't have management on site. This is not really pertaining to this, but how do you know somebody who's actually a resident who's parking?
We actually have parking passes that are in the windshield. And, and, you know, I, I understand what you're saying about management on site, but I'm sure anybody could get out on any given day and I'm down there.
Okay. Well, I was just asking, in other words, if your parking's free and the decal's there, you know, I'm a friend of somebody, or maybe not, I can park my car there for a while until.
The way we handle that is, is we have a, we work with a local towing company. And if you don't have a, a decal in the windshield, they'll come and tow it. And we've made it pretty clear to most of our tenants, and we, we do a lot of communication through emails and things like that, that if you do have family coming down, come on in, we'll give you a temporary parking pass so you don't get towed. Because the last thing I want to do is make enemies with my tenant.
I understand. I was just trying to get a free parking space for myself down there.
It's a good location. That could be a lane.
But you can see the question is, if you didn't have any oversight there, that's, you'd eventually have people just.
Oh, no, 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 we've got some stability, some management of that.
Okay.
But I'm sure it does happen on occasion. How's that?
It really has very little to do with the PUD. I was just, I was just.
No, it's inquisitive answer from my part.
You'll notice most of the private parking lots are, they sign up, they have a sign up, it's, and they actually also have to notify the police department if they tow off a private lot.
I think they're called privateers, those tow, towing companies, aren't they?
No.
Why do they have to notify APD? So somebody has figured it's stolen?
It's under ORC, yes, in case something indeed, just like that.
There have been occasions, somebody says my car's been stolen, and now it's been towed.
It's likely stolen, only you had fault. Any other comments or discussion about the planning commission? I would like to perform a motion to approve the planned unit development with the variance for the under two acre PUD.
And the front setback?
And note, this front setback is different, but accepted by PUD regulations.
Okay, I would move that we accept the preliminary plat.
Again, preliminary.
And with the variance, of course, of 210905, I think it is, which is the two acre rule, and minimum project air requirements, I mean. And that we do take note of the, the 22-foot setback where 25 is required, but that's not an issue.
And then as well, the comments by the city staff, particularly Public Works and the Fire and Police Department.
Be addressed in the final.
Yeah. As it usually.
And that you were referring to all the utilities?
Yeah, just making sure this stays on.
And I had planned on getting with an engineer, to be honest with you, here in the next week. I kind of wanted to see how today went.
Well, again, it's not necessarily preliminary, it's just so this gets picked up in the final, if it's required.
No, this is good for me, too. I'm not, you know, this is, I'm sure the engineer that I'm going to hire is pretty aware of.
Right.
He's local.
We've done some of the job for him.
Yeah, he should, he should be.
Okay, so that's the motion.
Yes.
Okay, did you get all that, Sean? More or less?
Any with seven?
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the preliminary PUD? Say aye. Any opposition? All right, thank you. Any further discussion?
You got some final plat to put together?
More work to do.
More work to do, yes.
Okay.
And I guess we're going to have to relay this to councils, so they get a.
Well, no, not yet. Still have to, the heat, still have to come back to us for us a final approval. I believe we have to have another public hearing, is that correct?
If applicable.
Okay, just if there's changes, okay.
If it's changed or if the planning commission warrants it.
Okay. But there will be a public hearing with this, any city council?
City council has.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. The other case we had has been stricken from the agenda. Well, integrated services, a 10-gram drive, a Title 41, that lead, private meetings, sorry, Paul mentioned that even that's going to be rescheduled perhaps as early as our next meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no further cases or discussion on previous case, we'll move along to communications. I'd like to add a couple. We got a recommendation back from our second sort of signed task force committee that we should take a look at once Harry gets back and discuss that, as well as, we've already discussed the sweepstakes ordinance in great detail. And, but again, we're waiting on Harry to return. I'd like to bring those up for the next meeting, those two items, give us a little time to talk about it, and then perhaps go to a public hearing if it works out for both, but.
I will not be at the next planning commission meeting, so I don't know if you want to do the sign at that time.
Okay.
So I'll just draw that out, some training with the fire, structure training.
We might be able to modify just that an hour and a half. I don't know.
I don't know. Just throwing it out there, I don't know.
I mean, it's, we've gone on this long, I don't know if one more meeting would be that big of a problem. But I would like to combine the two, once we have a public hearing. I think we'll get a better attendance and also hold that public hearing in the evening for the sweepstake and the sign ordinance discussion. May make for a long public hearing, but I think it might be worthwhile. Again, that'll be up for further discussion once we have all members in attendance, I think. The other communication I'd like to have us look at very soon is this parking one. And we had the, John Paskey brought forth what the Board of Zoning Appeals had been reviewing, and it seems like, you know, 30 percent had been in parking cases. And time and time again, gets brought up, and I know it's a hot topic with planning commission members and the planner as well. So I think it's something we should pursue pretty, pretty quickly. And last but not least, our cell tower, communication tower ordinance, I think, needs to be discussed as soon as we can get all members here. So we have a lot to do early, but I think we need, these are at least the four items I saw as we, we need to kind of pick on.
Can I request another one?
Okay.
Last, last year, I did give the planning commissioners recommendations for bicycle parking, which are changes to zoning code, and that fizzled out when I handed it to you, and we've never brought that back up, even though the commission said they would bring it back up. It is in compliance with our bicycle and pedestrian master plan that the city council spent $20,000 on.
This is a requirement to have bike. This is a requirement to have bike racks in certain developments?
It was a recommendation, yeah, for that with new business developments and large-scale residential developments, and Mr. Carrance probably, at this point, did not have any bicycle parking showing on it, nor is it required by code.
Well, I think it might be a good thing to include with our parking discussion, and we really should treat them hand in hand. I mean, I think part of the reason we can look at the reduction in required parking for these residential developments is because they're going to be putting bicycle parking in. So I think that's a good point, Paul, sorry for dropping the ball on that.
Can you read through that and give it back to us?
Certainly.
I totally forgot about that.
Yeah, I can, I can read, I can track it down.
And when you talk about parking requirements, are we talking about trying to shift the one-bedroom, one-parking place, trying to add a maximum and a min?
Yeah, I think everything's on the table, I don't, I don't have it defined yet, but I think we need to look at how parking is, I mean, why, on these developments, you know, you probably don't need extra parking, because not all that parking's going to be used, and it's, it's sort of like, you know, the, you know, retail development where they design parking for Thanksgiving shopping, even though that doesn't occur all the time, so.
Okay. And?
On the sweepstakes cafes, we indicated in the minutes that where you needed to get some direction from the law director, is that where that one is now, or am I?
The issues with the law director were specific to the business, whether you want to go in the business.
Yeah, not this other, I thought this other one was pretty well-handled, so I think that it's, I just requested that we wait for Harry to review, and before doing about it. I felt like any of this sort of larger new zoning should have a full.
The way I look at that, Paula, is that the, we may want to put in the business code or not, there would be two standalone parts that would work together if we include them both, but the business code, I'm not at all an expert on, and so if we want to put something in business code, I would be expecting City Council and the law director's expertise to determine how that part's written, and the auditor for that matter.
Well, here's a question, again, not our, I seem to be saying not a pervading law, but what was the, the other law that we're basing this on, the section of the ordinance in business, was there business ordinance under for that as well, right?
That is addressing both, business and zoning code.
Right. So, at least they have a precedent, I guess, to look at.
Okay.
Other communications?
Not that I can think of.
So, parking, 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 sign ordinance, sweepstakes, and the cell towers.
Rental side.
We have not seen that, have we?
What's that?
We haven't seen the final recommendation from the sign committee, have we?
I, yes. Yes, it was, it was more, yeah, it was in the form of minutes, but it isn't there.
And there was, Paul.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you read it, and you'll, it'll all come back to you, because I think he had some comments.
I'll be more than happy to get you another comment, Paul.
Do so, we always like to get some more trees.
Okay. If there's no further discussion or communications, reports from our city planner, and development and code enforcement facilities, who would like to go first?
I can start. Just one comment I would like to make, I hear a lot of people talking about how the comprehensive plan calls for density in this specific neighborhood. We haven't changed any part of city code in relation to what the comprehensive plan actually says to do to increase density down there. It says to actually have a R4 zoning for a specific area, and my understanding is that the R3 zoning for that neighborhood, the parking requirements, et cetera, have been on the books since the late 90s, if not earlier than that. Comprehensive plan was adopted in '05, I believe, or '04, so even though the plan says it, we should have greater density there, we never did anything with zoning to actually encourage greater density than what we already zoned in the 90s, so there is a discrepancy there. If the plan were enacted as written, and those, some of those guidelines were followed, we'd probably have significantly more people down there, so. Whether it's good or bad, that's certainly subject to debate, but it's the zoning that really matters when we're looking at those situations, in my opinion, and it's the zoning that creates the density. That's why R1s are less dense than R2s, and R2s are less dense than R3s.
But in terms of planning unit development, in theory, philosophically, we'd say, we can vary aspects within the planning unit development.
Certainly.
I think there's a limit, if I read it correctly, there's a 20 percent fudge factor in there.
Right.
We could, in theory, increase the density philosophically, saying, we're not doing an R4, but we, planning development's trending towards an R4.
Right, that's true.
The 97 law, one-bedroom, one-park space is always going to give us so many square footages that we can't get that density there.
Right.
Really, to do a PUD in this sense, which is what Tony was talking about, is the fact that we could philosophically say that, we're leaning towards that at the Planning Commission level, but then unless there's a code, or actually an R4 in place, council can always say, we don't like that philosophy.
Right.
And that's where the disconnect could occur. And I'm not advocating a change in the code, but I'm aware just where the trends were when the comprehensive plan was put in place, and that we actually kind of, because of the festivals, leaning away from that now, you know, so there's a.
Oh, right, and the other issue, I guess, is that we did, the Planning Commission approved, and City Council approved the reduction, the lot control, the ball control for lot coverage at 60 percent, I believe that goes into law next week.
Friday.
Friday goes into law. So that right there would be one way to address some of that density concern that people have, and that's one of the reasons council adopted that, so.
Right.
Whether that's an easy way to do it, whether that's the right way, whether it'll work, time will tell.
Well, I mean, that brings up an interesting point, because lot coverage is not one of the ones in this PUD that they would have to basically abide by the lot coverage standard.
No, they would still have to follow, in 210908A D, all other standards of a residential district located in R1, R2, and R3.
Right, that's what I'm saying, lot coverage is not the lot width or setback, what are the, so they could vary from.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, correct.
So, I'm wondering now, did we just tell this person they're going to come back with the final, and say, actually, new laws on the book?
Well, he, his applications were in prior to the law coming on the books, and so.
Even though he doesn't have final yet?
Yeah, the applications to start.
The application clock begins.
And as, as a point of picking this here, basically, the 210908A, which is lot width, setback, yard requirements, technically falls under both controls, so that would be, are we referring to Table?
I, I.
In other words, does lot coverage actually fall into that particular?
I think, I think yard requirements is lot coverage, I think lot coverage is part of A, so a PUD.
Right, part of D.
The PUD would not have to abide by lot coverage, because it goes through the whole.
Well, it has to abide with whatever we agreed to.
Exactly.
I think that's what you're going to see, or that, that'll be a.
And it does say, in 210905, second paragraph, a minimum of 20 percent of the land must be open space, so, but it does give room for variance in there.
Yeah, right.
At this point, a full 20 percent back and forth, once the law is enacted. Didn't mean to interrupt your.
Yeah.
No, no, it's good to just have the discussion about these things. A few other just updates, we will be having next week, March 9th, that meeting about the armory, 5:30 PM in this room, I believe that's a Thursday.
I think so, I guess.
Wednesday, either way. March 9th, we'll have an armory meeting. I am working with a, there are a few undergraduate students who are assisting me with doing some research on historic preservation ordinances around the state of Ohio, what they do, et cetera, so that's being worked on. The Arts Parks and Recreation Committee, I did meet with them two weeks ago about the possibility of doing an Arts Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, or a master plan, they did express some interest in that, so Rich Campatelli and I are going to discuss more with them about what that'll actually entail, and what kind of work and responsibility, and forming of subcommittees, et cetera, so that may or may not be happening this year, depending on people's interest in working on it. And County Planner Bob Eichenberg and I talked last week, and at some point in the next three or four months, we are going to try to put together some sort of a presentation for the Planning Commission, both Athens City and for the Athens Regional Planning Commission, just kind of a overview of planning ethics, and the AICP Code of Ethics that Bob and I are expected to follow, and some, and give some scenarios, ethical situations that planning commissioners and co-directors and planners may run into in the development process, just to kind of have a discussion on that.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
John? I just have one thing to bring up, next Tuesday night is the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, we have one case on the agenda for Thursday night, for a house on 10-Mound Street to be demolished and rebuilt back on the footprint, same footprint, so it needs variances for coverage, front, side, rear, every setback, just about, so, but worst-case scenario is could stay the way it is, and, so we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
And then, after that meeting, I think their, their board members are preparing a bunch of questions for the law director, I don't know if he's going to be present to speak to him that evening, but they're hoping to get some stuff put together for him, because they have a number of questions, I guess, for him to answer, so. If you have anything as well, let me know.
In terms of the zoning board appeals, having been on it, I, I'd like to see if we could find some information on what kind of guidance to give, maybe the training, I know we discussed this before, and there's a CD out there, we spent good money on it.
One of the questions, they're compiling their own list of questions, I do not know what they are at this time, as to what, you know, what they're going to ask the director.
One of the difficulties there, of course, was how to take the law that we have and put it case to case, and how, you know, how to, it's like a mathematical problem, and, you know, you can do the math problem, when somebody talks about, you know, you know, how many oranges, and how many feet go this way, that way, applying the words to the actual law, I think was the difficulty, I always saw when I was on the zoning board, and I don't know how you address that besides going, you know, giving cases and discussions and getting more into it than probably they want to deal with, but, you know.
I think they're wanting to know more about maybe some clarity of some of the findings, and some of the submission requirements, some people do not prepare a narrative statement when they come in, it does state that you're supposed to, but some of them are so self-explanatory, or there isn't really one that could be written, so I think they want to find out if it's not a complete application, so to speak, as it's still an acceptable review, those are the kind of questions that are going to ask.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for General Paul? All right, thank you both, as always.